We'll rise and do pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Secretary Stepek, would you take the role?
Certainly. Let's see. President Donald.
Here.
Vice President Brazington.
Here.
Secretary Stepek is here. Treasurer Guthrie.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Delisandro.
Here.
That's not sound.
Trustee Schaefer.
Here.
All present and accounted for.
Alright, very good. Very good. Any changes to the board agenda? None? Alright. We have three items on our consent agenda: the minutes of the ninth, payable, and administrative hire of Matthew. We have a motion before us. Mr. Delisandro.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Bailey? Any discussion? All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Consent agenda is accepted and agreed. Any clear range requests to address the board?
You have BPA students and I'm.
But they're the only ones, right? Okay. Alright, very good. High school presentation. BPA students?
The high school here?
I don't know, get it.
You said, "You stood up on your first meeting."
Stood up on my first meeting. Wow.
Dan, hand me a note. What do I get now?
You're smiling.
Fellow board members, do you want to just continue to go a couple items down while we're gathering the... you good with that?
Alright.
So let's go, let's, uh... We don't want to do 5A. That's a big item, right? Go down to six and seven? Oh, jump to human resources.
Human resources. So, um, as you appreciate the approval of the assistant director. And, you know, as I wrote, Matt has been with us and this program has been in growth to, to the growth of the program. So we're excited to welcome him.
Welcome.
Thank you, everybody. And, um, my next item is tenure recommendation. We do time-to-time hiring employees mid-year. Amy Wu is a teacher, a Chinese teacher. She's been primarily... oh, she's in there! Hello, Amy. Stand up, Amy. And Jeff, would you like to come on up, Amy? Jeff is just gonna say a few words.
Oh. I can sum Amy up very, very quickly. Amy had the opportunity to go to the high school for a couple months. And what I can say is, for my fifth grade students, I can't even count the number of students who have asked when is Mrs. Wu coming back? And my own daughter is a fifth grader, and so she is one of them. And she is incredibly excited to have Amy back. As you can tell, she's only gonna be back with us for a couple months before she's gonna get to go out again. But we are absolutely thrilled to have her. She's been a great addition.
So Amy has a two tenure, or about?
It's awesome. Given that we have a motion on the table, would someone like to make that motion? Yes, sir.
Move to approve the tenure recommendation listed below with Amy Wu, effective December 29th of 2007.
And is there a second?
Support.
Other?
That's okay.
Jenny, sorry. Do we have a second? All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Very good. Motion carries. Alright. On our agenda, we're going back to pre-arranged requests to address the board and before high school presentation. Floor is yours.
Alright, thanks. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight our Business Professionals of America Club. And last month, they competed at the regional leadership conference where we had, I think, seven or eight groups, they first, second, or third place, many of which are now going out to the state competition this month of January. So there's some great videos to check out, one of which was in our December highlights. If you just, if you take a moment and spot in the video, I was gonna, I was gonna play the video, but Pat wouldn't let me. So. I mean, it is, if I watched his video five years ago, I wouldn't have believed that it came from my school case, even, even just five years ago. It is so professionally done. I mean, it is like straight out of the movie theater. And these are high school age students. And it's not, it's not just because we have fantastic equipment that we're able to, you know, purchase through CTE. It's not that, you know, our kids are working with studio level equipment. It's that we have a phenomenal teacher, Chaz Millard, in there, you know, directing and leading these kids. And they're just genuinely passionate about what they're doing. And the quality of work, nothing speaks for itself. So Chaz is a father of two, so he's a pretty busy guy this time after school hours. It's quite precious with his kids. So he's not here today. And I just also wanted to acknowledge our I am Third Club. They went up on this December, and they went out to Pontiac, as they do each month, to work with those who are less privileged. But this past month, they want an extra layer and level up. And so they created 65 blankets through a project called Project Linus for those less fortunate. So I just wanted to highlight that because I know our, our giving treat is such an excellent program. We've been doing that for years. And I know that gets a lot of recognition, but I didn't want the Project Linus from our students to nine thirty to go overlooked. And I wanted to give them a shout out for their work this past, you know, past month. So the teacher who leads and facilitates that is Jill Lomond. He's doing great things. And those kids seem to just step it up each month in what they're doing. So I want to highlight that as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Item five, Board of Education Matters. Continuation of authorization discussion?
So Jill and I thought we would just give the board a brief update from our last meeting. Jill has a few slides that she's gonna go over. I handed out to all of you and updated FAQ. And so we're, we're not gonna go through all of those tonight, but certainly read through those. And if you have additional questions or that kind of thing, we'll address those. So I'm going to, I'm gonna stand up if it's alright and
Hi, we're trying to get projected for you, but for those of you who don't know me, my name's Jill Lamon. I've sort of transitioned into a new role here with this charter application possibility on the table. I'm working now as a Director of Educational Solutions, and this is one of the projects that I'm working on. And I think Tim asked me to help out with it mostly in an effort to preserve and respect the OVA team's time. We know that what OVA is doing is important work. We know that what OVA as a team is doing is, is working. And we don't want to kind of mess with a good thing, right? So I don't want to overtax those people, though they have helped tremendously with me to get me up to speed on the Pearson relationship and some of the other pieces to this puzzle as I catch up, okay? So bear with me because this is a new project for me as well. And I'm educating myself as I'm trying to educate others. But there may be questions that you'll have that I won't know the answer to. And one of the things that I said to Tim when I first was assigned this was I think that we're moving a little quickly for me personally. And that's what I was hearing from high school staff and from other stakeholders. And we've decided to slow down. So I want to let you know that. We are not voting this evening. This is just more of a, more exploration into the possibility of making this decision together. So we don't anticipate any sort of vote until at the end of February at the earliest. So I hope that tonight sparks more conversation and more questions, and we have more time to gather answers and do our due diligence.
So I think we're just gonna have to run through this out. I don't know why it's not. So I don't know why it's not.
Okay.
So I apologize for that. So what Jill was saying is, based on our last meeting, we wanted to give you an update on where we're at, answer some of the questions that you all had, as well as internally, some other things that we wanted to follow up on. Just point out a few things that we've, we've learned since our last meeting, and then basically just communicate to you the next three or four steps that we see the board taking. And we'll be doing that both at our next meeting and then the meeting at the end of February. So no, no action item tonight. That will be forthcoming. Alright?
So one, one step that we've taken in our research is to reach out to some other school districts that are doing this. I personally was not aware, but there are actually 15 other statewide cyber charters in the state of Michigan that are working with local educational agencies. So those are not central Michigans or the fairer states of the world. Those are the other high schools that are between us. We've reached out to some of those people. And we want to make sure that we learn from others in the states as we, as we move forward together. Also, we have been in contact with multiple people at the MDE, trying to get in touch with them and trying to make sure that we have the right procedures in place as we work through this as a, as a really a competitive process determining which charter we might like to work with, we might like to authorize. Obviously, we have a recommendation for a very strong partner that we have at Pearson, but we want to make sure that we open up a window that is competitive for anyone else who may like to work with us. And so, you know, this evening marks the beginning of that window that we are accepting applications. So we know we've received applications from Pearson Connections Academy, but we are also open to any other entities that may want to apply to work with us.
So another, another area that we learned about is our, some advice we have received from one of our lawyers that said that the board actually should have a policy in regards to charters. And quite honestly, I did not think that we did, but we do. We have one that's already out there. And so a good thing to check off to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, but we learned that we don't have to create a new policy or that kind of thing. We can just kind of move forward.
It's under Board Powers 0122. There's a... could you repeat that, please? Board Powers. It's section 0122 of the board policy. And it just says that the board has the right to authorize charter schools. Very, very straightforward. Okay, so here we are. I think I've already mentioned all of this. Where we are now, we have gathered some information. We're sharing it out. We've shared an FAQ document with the cabinet, with the board members. We're gonna be sharing it with the ad team, and it's also going to be live on our website for any community members who have questions. It's a lot of frequently asked questions that are on there. And if you have more, please send them to me. We want it to be a very comprehensive document, so everyone feels like their questions are answered. We have been in communication with Pearson. Pearson has had the opportunity to do this previously, so they are a very, you know, very well-educated partner to help us work through this in the event that we do work with Pearson. And like I said, we publicized our charter window. Why would we want to authorize? And I think that's the number one question that keeps coming to me is, aren't we creating our own competition? Aren't we creating our own competition? I, I don't believe so. I believe that if you are someone who wants to go to a statewide charter academy, you already have that option right now. And, and you are going to a statewide charter academy right now. But as those fill up, and there are no shortage of students who want to do this, now this would be a third option for them to go to another Connections Academy, and it would actually involve the Oxford name, involve the Oxford people. And we would be able to have a part in that process. Yeah?
I have a question. And this maybe, it was subscribed to me because I had the same question. Why would we do this? And is it true, this was explained to me, that OVA can only reach out to students in surrounding school districts?
Yes.
And so this program would allow us to go anywhere in the state?
Absolutely.
So we wouldn't be seeking for this program, students from the surrounding school districts?
Correct. We wouldn't be seeking them. But basically, if they got the program, they wouldn't have the option.
But we're not gonna be marketing to them.
But, correct. But my, we won't be marketing to them. Pearson would be marketing statewide and could get some students from Oakland County. But I guess my point in saying what I said before is that those same students in Oakland County have a Pearson Connections Academy option right now. So I don't think that...
In Michigan?
In Michigan. There are two other charters that are Connections Academy.
Well, okay, that was my next question. How many, are we, how many schools are, is Pearson gonna open, open in the state, and then are we competing against them as well?
So, good question. And I think that comes down to overall market share. How many students in the entire state of Michigan, I think, are interested in a full-time cyber academy? So that's, that's, that's your overall pot. Out of that number, many of them have picked one of the 15 options that are currently out there today. We currently think that there is still more demand for students to go to another cyber school. Some of those 15 cyber schools, if not all of them, have caps on the number of students that they can take in. And so by us opening a charter school, or authorizing a charter school, the charter school would actually be the one with a contract with Pearson to provide the services.
Well, Pearson already has two other contracts in the state with other charter schools that have been up.
Correct.
So who would make the determination, if there's one more new student coming in, which of the three would it go, would that student go to?
So I don't want to speak for them, but pretty much their marketing, think of it like this. Those other two cyber charters, they each have their own board. Each of those boards have decided to utilize Pearson and their services. But when it comes to marketing, Michigan Connections Academy and Great Lakes Cyber Academy, which are the names of the two, I believe.
Two other ones that Pearson has?
Each charter is doing their own marketing, is doing their own business plan, is providing their own services to their students. They just both have to be using Pearson to provide that, but totally separate marketing.
Would we do our own marketing then?
We would not. The charter would be authorized, they would do their own marketing.
But in the other two agreements they have, their agreement is to not do the marketing in those programs.
No, the charter schools themselves. So think of the charter that we're looking to authorize, think of it as almost like a local district.
Separately.
Separately. It's up to Oxford to decide how we're gonna, how we're gonna market. Okay?
So if we establish this separality, that it's that entity that will do the marketing?
Correct. It's their decision.
Not Pearson's.
Correct. Now, they may, and they probably will, contract with Pearson to do that portion for them. But it's gonna be them marketing whatever the thing that this charter is. It's not like, um... It's not like you see an advertisement that says, "If you're interested in attending a cyber school, here, call one of these 15." Each one of them are separate entities. They each do their own marketing. Some of them use similar companies, same companies, some of them don't. But each charter is really charged with their own marketing, business plan, their own, um... Their whole educational plan for what they've come up with. And whoever has authorized them has agreed to say, "This is what we want you to be doing."
Okay. Sorry if I...
Nope. Sorry.
Okay. So if we, as a board, vote to authorize this separate entity?
Yep.
Will that separate entity have employees?
They may, or they may not. So could a charter, and does a charter today have its own employees? Yes. But that charter can also subcontract out all of that to another business.
Pearson.
In this case, it could be Pearson. And Pearson would actually have all those employees.
So it wouldn't, funding wise, wouldn't come out of our budget at all then?
Not at all.
Okay, but then that gets back into the question, if they're marketing for those other two districts because of they have that similar leaseback, if you will, for marketing purposes with those other organizations, where they're, where Pearson or whoever we decide, if we decide, with their allegiance need. Are they marketing for those other entities? Do you know?
I hope, but I presume that they are.
That they are?
But I, but I don't know.
So then they're, they're sort of an inherent conflict of interest, I think.
It would sort of be like this. And, and I don't know, I, hopefully this is a good analogy. It'd sort of be like GM giving dollars so that the Delisandro dealership could advertise their GM product, but Jenny could also advertise for her dealership. Are they competing?
Wouldn't.
They, they, they want, they want customers to come in. They both are offering similar products. Do both of them have the same marketing company? Maybe, maybe not. I think the, the big thing to, to try to just mentally get over is that if we authorize a charter, it's almost like we're authorizing a separate district. What that district decides to do is up to that board. Our responsibility is just to have oversight of that charter's board to make sure that they're doing things legally, to make sure that they're doing things that, that this board wants to ensure that they're doing. But what they choose to do, we can't necessarily mandate.
Those positions that are gonna be the board, are they appointed by us? Are they elected positions?
That board elects their own board.
How does that, wait, that board elects their own board?
So, um, there's actually a nonprofit that is created, and that nonprofit, um, I think, submits names to elect the board. And then that board comes into existence.
We do have right of refusal for board members as well.
Okay.
And, and there are requirements. So like, one of, one of the requirements is that while this is a charter that serves the state of Michigan, we need to make sure that at least one of those board members lives in our county. Since we're doing the authorization...
Our district.
Our district.
Does it, the law does not say, "In our district"?
I guess so.
It just says, "Local," and it's been interpreted as meaning, "At least in your
I, I, I'm done for now. I'll have more, but I'm done.
If you, if the bit that we've gotten is some nuts and bolts where we're trying to get a high level view, but Dan?
Jill, continue, and then I'll, I'll, just, because she may answer my question.
I hope that I'm gonna answer some of the questions.
Okay, we'll get you there.
Okay, but, um, so here are the main three responsibilities of any charter authorizer. Okay? And as Tim said, it was, it has to do with the contract itself and make sure that everything is legally correct and is within the bounds of the law. And also the fiscal agency, which, and I wanted to mention when you talked about paying teachers and things like that, the only piece that we are in any way connected financially to the charter would be through the school aid. It would be receiving their school aid and forwarding it on and retaining whatever fee we determine is, and I think 3% is probably where we would end up if we were to work with Pearson. And then compliance oversight. So once they, once they have created their board of directors and have made their recommendations as a nonprofit, we do have the right to refuse those individuals. We have the right to speak with them, interview them, and work with them in any capacity we like. I will say, speaking for myself, if I'm gonna stay on this project, I would like to go to those board meetings and get a feel and a sense for, for, you know, what they believe in before we make decisions on some of their educational plan and things like that. Performance standards and accountability, we have to make sure that their educational plan syncs with our goals as a district. And, and I would like to say that they do from what we've seen so far, but I think that the board would obviously want to see all of those documents as well. The relationship with the charter, like I said, we have to share the same pedagogy and then clear expectations and procedures in place. Again, one, another benefit of potentially working with Pearson is that they have done this before. They do have the documents. But there's nothing that we're gonna wanna just blatantly adopt everything that they're already doing. And we want this to be different and unique. And we are just an additional layer of accountability for them. But we are not, if you're a parent who has an issue, for example, you're not contacting Oxford to deal with that issue. Like, I know this is cyber, and we're trying to wrap our minds around that, but if you picture it as a brick and mortar, I mean, it's its own school with its own procedures and its own staffing and its own accounts and all of its own district code even, okay? School code and district code. This is some of the information that they suggest in the MDE's handbook when you're discussing a partnership or considering a partnership. And I thought it was really pertinent to our decision-making. Give you a minute to read it. So then if we do choose to work with Pearson, why would we even consider Pearson? Well, we already have a trusting relationship. We already have a solid partnership. We work with them at many different levels with, with many different projects right now. And we do have a trusting working relationship with them. Also, they have an experienced educational team. They have a very solid presence here in the Midwest and within the state of Michigan. We have aligned values from those. Like, you know, I can speak to that. Everything I'm reading is, is really quite wonderful, and I think you'll feel the same way. And the unique, non-competitive approach. So we have discussed with them having it as a contractual obligation that if someone from Oxford community calls in within the boundaries of Oxford to a Pearson line, let's say they saw an ad, that they would actually suggest to them that they come to OVA and say that that may be a good option for your family. And then also in contiguous counties, they would be aware of us and would mention us as a potential option for those families as well. When it comes to marketing, I do want to make sure these students are not our students. Okay? So that's an important distinction to make. These students would be students of the charter. And, and though we want to make sure they have a good educational experience, we're not the ones providing the educational experience. We're just making sure that the charter is doing what we've agreed they're supposed to do. So again, expectations being laid out ahead of time and mutual agreement on those are really paramount to this relationship. Jill? Yes. Who, what would your diploma say? That's an, the diploma will go say the name of the charter, and it will say authorized by Oxford Schools, but it will not be an Oxford School diploma. So it's not like a Wildcat, it's not like it's Oxford High Schools, I'd say anything like that. Yeah?
How is this, if that's the case, then how does this, is this part of getting Oxford's name out there, broadening our limits in the state?
So to me, I don't know that it's our name, but it's our model, and it's our way of delivering education. So this is the way that the state is going, or this is the way the nation is going, is to cyber education. And this is where everyone's headed. We, we need to, we need to get a foothold. We need to experience this platform and this new landscape for education, I think.
Okay. I misunderstood. I felt like there's been some talk about getting Oxford's, expanding Oxford's name. Maybe it was more Oxford's approach, Oxford's model.
Correct.
Well, they talked about branding. That's what they used at the last meeting. That word got thrown out. That's why I think we need to hear things.
So we will not be dual branding. You will not see Wildcat on any of their marketing materials, nothing like that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I believe this is helpful. This was really helpful for me. And if it's a little blurry for you, but here is a current snapshot of where all their Connections Academy students are coming from. So the fear that they're coming mainly from Oxford or from Oakland County is, is not the case. Okay? That's not reality. That that's not reality right now. They're coming from city centers, they're coming from Lansing, they're coming from Detroit and they're coming from Grand Rapids and, and the mass authorities. And you can see we've got even some up in the UP and things like that. So I guess, Mark, to your point, I don't, if Pearson's not concerned that they're going to compete with themselves, I don't think that we need to be, I think there's plenty of students to go around is sort of where I'm at on it.
Please.
Thank you. They, we talked about this a little bit earlier, but I just wondered, can you talk a little bit about how any of the, um, any of the cyber academies are assessing potential enrollment? Not just enrollment now, but is there any, anything that's being utilized right now to, to assess interest in enrolling in cyber academy?
Well, I know that the, I know that the Pearson marketing team has looked at to create their projections and has worked with specialists to see what they, what they expect and it's going to be a number somewhere around between 300 and 350 students that they expect based on their metrics to be enrolled within the first year.
Okay, so we're able to look at, back to the competitive, the competition potentially with OVA, that was what we were, you know, the context in which we were really talking about, you know, how do we assess interest in where they're coming from? That's what I'm interested in learning more about is how they're assessing that and how, how to plan for that.
It's pretty abstract, I'm not sure.
Is it?
Um, how we could assess that.
I don't know if that would be something that they would have internal to their own marketing teams or maybe they contract out to somebody to say, okay, we, we know exactly what the demand is today, but how they assess and come up with, there's 20,000 more potential students in the state of Michigan that want to choose this option. How they come up with that number, who comes up with that number? I have no idea.
Having the state board. Okay.
These are some numbers of some other, you know, districts in the state who are authorizing and what their, you know, charters look like right now in terms of enrollments, this was for 17, 18, oh, I'm sorry, 67.
So you see there's sort of, there's some local LEAs that have authorized as well as, uh, is there?
These are just the local.
Okay, but there are some ISDs that have done that as well.
Have you communicated which ones of those have gone with Pearson as your partner?
None of these have gone with, with the, um, with the Connections Academy.
Right. The only two that have is, uh, Michigan.
Great Lakes and Michigan Charter.
Michigan K12.
So those are actually authorized by Fair State and by Central Michigan University. Those are not, they're not Michigan Connections Academy, thank you.
So Michigan Connections Academy?
Those have a local school, but they're working with right now, they're only working with post-secondary institutions.
Correct.
Correct, as their authorizer.
We would be Pearson's first in the state.
You had mentioned earlier about compliance oversight, who in our district will be, because it won't be this board or future boards, who in the district will, will be responsible for that oversight? Is it going to fall behind Tim and Cabinet? How does that look?
Hopefully me.
Okay.
But will I assign somebody to, um, do the, the daily, weekly management? Absolutely.
Okay, because my concern is, should we move forward? And all of a sudden, you know, you're getting this off the ground, it takes a lot of time. I, I, my concern is, is we don't want to have, you're distracted by this when we have everything else going on, I just want to make sure that there's going to be something in place. And then if I may, more of a comment than anything, um, really what we have to look at are a couple of different things. Number one, what is your feeling of charter schools, what's your philosophy as, personally as a charter school? You know, um, so you really have to think about that and it's kind of what, as we took away last time, where I was at with this. Because right now charter schools are our competition. So we're placing ourselves to combat that competition in a certain way. We're grabbing those students who, whether we like it or not, parents have jobs that are much more transient than they ever were before. They can work here today, have a meeting in Florida, have a meeting in California, they're much more transient than they have ever been before. What better way to keep the family intact instead of mom and dad, or instead of dad traveling all over the country for meetings, doing something like this? This is going to happen more and more. We can't think about today, we have to think about what do we feel in the research that's done, what do we think Oxford's going to be in 10 years? Because if you look at 10 years ago, I don't think a lot of us thought we would be where we're at today because of the way that education is changing. So as you're thinking about this and you're thinking about questions to ask, the questions that we need to ask ourselves, would, would we personally feel, and more importantly, the decisions that we make, how are they going to affect our residents, not just now, but 10 years from now, 15 years from now?
I, but I think that their point is that it's not going to impact our residents, it's affecting people outside of our county.
I understand, but there's going to be the ability for parents to live anywhere in the state of Michigan. So they can, they might, you know, so if they're enrolled, um, and I'm not just saying about them, right now, I'm not saying about any, even if they don't live in, let's just say they live in, um, in Grand Rapids. Well, I'm traveling to all these different states, I'm, I'm not putting my kids in, this is mostly my Grand Rapids schools, I'm not putting my kids in Grand Rapids schools when I can find an educational source, but I can take my family with me wherever I go. And so this is opening up not just ones that touch our borders, not just Locur, Oakland, McCone, it's, it's now opening up all, all those different counties in the state. It is a big picture. I mean, I don't think we've really even thought about what education will look like in 10 years. I haven't until I really started looking at this and said, you know, put myself in a position where I have an opportunity to travel anywhere I want for my job. Calling Grand Rapids my home, I want a good, solid educational platform for my child and still be able to have that ability to have them with me. Yes.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So I think there's a, I think there's a fine line between, you know, branding your school and franchising and all of that and it's a, a line, I, I think it's something to be looked at very carefully. Branding is not our job, our job is educating Oxford kids. I, I'm much more concerned with kids of Oxford than I am of kids anywhere else because that's my position on the board is to secure an educational opportunity for every student in Oxford. So that's, that's my number one concern. I guess what I want to know is like, what benefit is this? Like what, why are we considering this? Why should we consider it? Like what, I, I think it's great that we're searching for opportunities to be the path trailblazer and educate other kids, but our job is to educate Oxford kids.
Yep.
So why, you know?
Can you finish the presentation? Like, I feel, I'm feeling disjointed. I wasn't at the last meeting and now I'm, I, these are all great questions, but look, can we finish the presentation?
This is the last slide.
Okay, very good.
So this is.
This has to come back.
Yeah, no, I can get it, I'll sit there.
No, I, I think that this is kind of lays out kind of a, a little bit of timeline of what we want to do as we, as we review the, the potential moving forward. Again, not rushing into a decision tonight. Heather, I would never want us to make a decision out of fear, I would not want that to be any reason why we do this, but I do want to mention that the fact that these are popping up so quickly around the state and as recently as this month, this semester, there's a new one now that has an estimated enrollment of 2,500 in the state, not through Fear, someone scanned it through another partnership. I guess I would have to say that if we don't do it, someone else will.
Means it's a financial gain for us? I mean, is that one of the reasons?
Let me try and answer both your questions.
Okay.
I think first and foremost, to your concern that, that our primary role and job is for Oxford to, to oversee the education of Oxford students, I guess I would answer that in that that's probably a benefit of authorizing the charter because the charter owns all that other stuff. We're not doing any of it. If we, if we even had the capability of taking OVA statewide, guess what? Now we do own it. Because now it's my employees, it's, it's our teachers, it's our curriculum, it's, it's the online programming that we're offering, that's, we've got to make sure we open labs in Meskeen and Traverse City and blah, 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 blah. Now all of a sudden, we do own that. This, this is a way to, um, allow that to happen, to go statewide and yet we don't own all of that. So I think this is, I guess to me, an argument for doing an authorization versus even if we had the capability of taking OVA statewide, which we don't. Okay, so that, hopefully that tries to answer that, that question. At the end of the day, what's in it for us? Okay, so, yep, financially, we get a 3% on the overall revenue generator. So take the number of students, take the state foundation allowance, multiply that together times 3%, that is how much revenue we get back. That revenue, um, we have to make sure that we do those three main responsibilities. Do we think we can do those responsibilities at less than the amount of revenue we're going to generate? Absolutely we do it. Second reason, um, we utilize Pearson and their products quite extensively in the district. This is a way to leverage that relationship and that contract to give us even larger financial return. Let me say it this way. If I contract with somebody and I say, uh, I'm going to buy a thousand middle school math books, okay? Thousand, here's our cutoff, here's your price, we'll give you a deduction to 150 bucks, normally they're 250. Okay, great. But if I now have a partner with another school and they can buy 2,500 more bucks, probably 2,500 more books, and now all of a sudden I'm saying, we're buying 3,500. Oh, we, we can offer that to you for a hundred dollars now. You leverage that so that, that our contract with Pearson becomes much more beneficial to us because we can leverage it. So that's, that's a huge financial gain. The third reason, and this is more, I guess philosophical than financial, and that is, I guess I would just, I would go back to the email that Mark had sent out a couple of weeks ago in that, you know, this is 2018, you know, nine years ago, would any of us would we have said, OVA's going to be our, our second largest school in this district? No way. When I try to look another nine or 10 years out, what is education going to look like? I see more walls coming down than being built up. I, I can't tell you the way that Michigan's going to finance their schools in 2030. But I think it's going to be more on a macro scale than on a micro scale. I think the more that we learn about this market, the more that we, um, are able to partner with somebody and let them do this thing out here, but yet we're learning and we're coming along. I think this, this rate will be in a much better position 10 years from now than if we don't. And that's just my personal opinion. So I'll stop there.
Dan, I think you had something.
I just ran, if, if we, if we were to assume 1,500 students enrolled and I use $7,400 because it's, it's a little bit greater, but I use $7,400, 3%, it's $333,000 back into the district. To your point, are we worried about everybody else, we're worried about kids in Oxford. The 333,000 plus the expenses that we're going to have to have somebody managing and running and doing our steps, it's not going to be 333,000, but it'll probably be north of 150,000, 200,000 that can go back into Oxford students. We are forced to do out of the box thinking. If we don't, we're going to end up like a lot of the other districts that are saying, why do we have this extra revenue?
I do suggest that we are still remain physically responsible to our partners with the changing landscape in education. This is a way for us to still offer the program we offer. And once it's off the ground, this is from speaking with others, this is not obviously from personal experience, but from others who have that experience, once it's off the ground and it's running and it's a well-built machine, the oversight piece is, is a little relaxed, I mean, it's a little, it's much, much more minimal. Right now it's about the startup investment and making sure that we have all the pieces in place and that we have all the procedures and we, we really have done our due diligence. Once we've done all of that, if we lay the groundwork correctly, it shouldn't be such an investment on an annual basis and it will be nearly passive income at that point. And yeah, and if you use your numbers, Dan, it's, if we use that 300, that's just for the first year, but now we're talking numbers, if you look at Pearson's numbers and our Connections Academy, I took the average of those two, we're looking at quite a bit of money on, on a regular basis with very little work involved likely.
Jenny?
Thank you. Aside from the risk of leaving money on the table and aside from the risk of potentially limiting our students in the future, clearly stated, what are the other risks potentially, if there are any, associated with a partnership to?
So from a legal perspective, we are completely separate entity when it comes to liability, when it comes to contractual obligations, if they don't pay their employees, that, that has nothing to do with us.
Are there any risks aside from what we just talked about, leaving money on the table and limiting our growth and limiting access for our students? Are there any other risks that would be important to talk about?
Nothing is coming to mind, but I will certainly, you know, ask around and make sure that I'm not missing anything.
Dr. Raisin?
Sure. I think Dan has some great points, but I don't know if 1,500 kids is a realistic number to even throw around. Look at the size of the other cyber charter academies, many range as small as 130 and most don't go higher than 350 or so. So I guess that, you know, I don't think we've strolled that number around likely to see less so much money we're going to make.
But Joyce, I don't want to interrupt you, but like Connections, I'm sorry, but those numbers are just for the local, that's, I apologize for that.
And I guess my other big concern is like when I think about the mission of Oxford Community Schools, it says on our website, "To provide education that challenges all students to achieve their maximum potential in academics, arts and athletics and prepares them to succeed in global society." Nowhere in my mind is this charter academy help our mission, um, it's a completely different mission. And I sort of feel like we're, we're selling Oxford Schools' name to this charter place. They have everything to gain by partnering with Oxford. Like when I look at these other districts, these are not districts that are well-known, that are necessarily doing the right thing, that have incredible achievement scores, are just sort of random districts that, that none of us are on Oxford anyway. So I just have a lot of concerns and, and I'm going to do more homework, but it would be really hard for me to support this cyber charter academy. Especially when I see Ms. Lamond, who I thought was going to focus on the national programs, and now I see her with a new role. So what happened to the international program, growth idea that we were going to have? So I guess I just, I feel like it's really, not that we're going to vote on something right away, like I felt that we were going to rush, rush, rush. And I just don't know if there's a reason to rush. And I'm concerned about who's doing what where. And just based on the failure of some of our past partnerships, I don't think they've been successful or good for Oxford kids. I just have a lot of concerns.
Mr. Stubb?
Thank you, Mr. Stubb. You know, like I, you guys have heard me many times talking about this. It was quite frankly, over the last 10 years, out of the box thinking that kept Oxford Schools in the black and kept Oxford Schools at the, the point where we weren't deciding which program to terminate next, it was deciding which to terminate, which program to add or we never got to have discussions about what schools were going to close. And when, when I go to all the student, or all the MASP conferences, I'm telling you that everybody. And when, when I go to all the student, or all the MASP conferences, I'm telling you that everybody, and I'm not just saying that, I'm telling you everybody that I talk to, whether it's from Detroit schools, from Trenton Rapid schools, from Sioux State Marie schools, they're all conversations around, "What are we gonna close next?" We even had that discussion here, "What are we gonna close next?" And why? I believe it's out-of-the-box thinking. And I don't fully grasp this, I said this at that meeting, yet. I've already had a lot of answers that have helped me. But this is what I love, and going back to that article that I sent out, take a look at that, man. The future is way different than we can possibly predict. And that's coming from somebody with a really high level of input in world economy, you know, from, to the chairman of Diamond Rapids. And I, I, I gotta put some authority into that and believe it, so I think it's worth looking at. I'm not convinced, and I'm glad you said we're slowing down, but it is certainly something that I think can be of benefit to Oxford if it's done right. And so I would like us to keep going.
So Mr. Raisin?
Couple of questions. What flexibility do we have to make this unique? Meaning, I mean, we're well-known, I mean, we, we do things the best. Our virtual academy is what draws people here, because it's part Oxford. If this is something separate, kind of going to your point about the dealerships, what's gonna draw this, draw people to our charter versus another charter? I mean, are we just taking another McDonald's and placing it somewhere else and you're gonna get that same terrible Big Mac here that you're gonna get somewhere else? Or what do we have that when people say, "Okay, I got five charter schools to look at, McDonald's, 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 McDonald's," what can we say or do that's gonna say, "This one's Oxford." Because like right now, if I'm a middle school parent, looking to move to Lake Orion, to wherever, I'm looking to what we have and, and Oxford has those teachers, the best. I mean, you look at some of the teachers we have in middle school, Beverly Schitzel, Chris Mutana, I mean, they're second to none. That caused people. What's gonna draw that student to our charter versus the ones across the street?
So, if I can just try and address a couple of the things that's said. Corey, to your point, when a student is taking 100% online, probably the biggest difference that that student, that parent sees is that online application, that online experience. So if I go to one of those local charters on there, when they log in and the online discussion boards, there are online texts, there are online videos, that experience is nothing like the experience they get when they log into a Pearson online charter. There is a difference. Okay? And that's our job to say, "What is it that we want to authorize to put out there? What are we saying that this is up to our standards, but we're willing to authorize?" So that's how, that's just one example, I guess I would say is why the charter that we authorize would be different than 12 other ones in the state. Okay? I totally appreciate your, your points, Joyce, and I get that. I, I guess I just, I guess I want you to make sure you hear from me as your superintendent. One of my primary jobs is to not just make sure the operation of the district is going okay today, but make decisions that are impacting us three years, six years, 10 years down the road. And I, I, I think I probably get at least 10 new ideas or options or something across my desk every week. And some you spend a little bit more time on and look at, and some you throw in the basket right away because it's just, you know, it's not us. That's not to say that, that I'm telling you, you, you have to authorize this. This has risen to a level that I think it is of your consideration, you need to seriously consider it. You, you may wanna do it, you may not, that's okay, but that's your role. And I totally agree, Joyce, you know, when you read our mission, that is our mission today. That is the work that we do today, that's the definition of a mission. I think this really speaks more to our vision. The vision says, "Where do we wanna be 10 years, 20 years, 30 years?" And that is where I think this comes into play. Just like I wouldn't mind jumping, do this 100% entirely today with our own students, no. Because one, I don't think our students would want to do that, and I don't think we're ready. But that doesn't mean that, that maybe we don't take steps to try and get ready for our future on the road, so. But I, I totally appreciate the point you made, I just, I wanna make sure that I'm clear with the board too on why we feel this is important enough to bring before you for your inspirations.
And then a kind of follow-up, kind of to your point, Joyce, is kids are leaving regardless, you know, like the example of parents moving for work, high travel for work. I think this is a good way for us to capture or keep those students rather than them go to another district or another charter is, I mean, first we offer them the OVA option, if that's not it, then this is the last option to say, "We're Oxford."
They could have a great deal of everything, it would be the same with Oxford.
Well, I'm fine with saying that.
If they have independent curriculum, independent teachers, they would not be Oxford.
Yes, Jenny?
I feel like we're doing a lot of talking that is, and maybe there's a little supposition going on, a little bit of assuming. I, I don't necessarily wanna make any remarks, but I just am compelled to ask the question. Is there opportunity to ask the constituency, our district, what they think about this possibility? Are they experiencing the same opportunities to work outside of the district and take their families and travel? I mean, I am still back on the, "How can we assess what this really means to our district now? And then potentially in the future?" Because I don't think any of us have a crystal ball. So I'm, I really am kind of staying with the present, and, and I understand the need to look at the future. But I do feel like the present is where, is where we drop and we have to listen carefully and watch carefully, observe, so that we will understand what trends are meaningful and predictable. So I'm wondering if there are plans being made to assess beyond just this board?
So, if I understand you correctly, I guess maybe I'll answer that two different ways, and hopefully I, I get it. As far as our assessment, do we think there is potential growth in that marketplace for either some type of hybrid or 100% online? Absolutely. That's why you'll see in a few months when we bring our budget forward for next year, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna double down and invest even more in OVA because we think we still can grow it. So from, from that local, at least Oakland and the six counties that touch us, do we think that there is still a huge market share out there to capture? Yeah. And that's where we're gonna put our biggest investments, absolutely.
And that's data-driven?
Yeah. Our, our largest growth in FTE over the last nine years, OVA, hands down. Our seated enrollment this year was up, I think, 40 or 50 kids. Last year, it was down 40 or 50. The last six or seven years, our seated enrollment, absolutely flat. How have we gotten from 5,000 students to 6,100? It's all in OVA. OVA's our second largest building in this district. Absolutely. Do we, do we see that continued growth? Absolutely. Now, can I step in beyond that and say, "Would I expect that same thing in the rest of the state of Michigan?" Yeah, I think there is. Do I know that for sure? No. But I believe that can be true. In regards to feedback or that kind of stuff, obviously, people email, call me, ask me questions, it's all been good. But I, I guess if I heard you, you, you wanted to know what our community thought of this or whatever, I guess I would, I would recommend too that parents just contact you as their board member and, and let you know, "Yeah, I think this is a great idea, no, I think this is, you know, terrible, don't, don't do this." Yeah, I, I, I want our community to, and that's why we, this is the second board meeting in a row now where we, the majority of our time is discussing this. We're, we're not trying to pull anything over anybody's eyes, we're putting it out there, we're discussing it in open, and at some point, we'll make a decision, do we move forward or not? And that's okay. That's, that's where we're at.
Okay.
Dan?
We had the questions of, "What's the typical enrollment for statewide cyber charter academy?" And looking at the numbers that were kind of revolving around these numbers here, 2016, 17 enrollment, they had 9% or 146,000 Michigan K-12 students enrolled in the cyber.
Charter.
Charter, I'm sorry.
Totally different.
In charter schools. So I guess, as, as you said earlier, Tim, do you see that? Do you feel it's always projecting itself out that way where it's going from charter schools would be the push? When you talk to people at your soup meetings and Lansing and stuff like that, do you see the emphasis being put towards charter schools? Because it seems like from a national level, that is where, that's where the push is being, is, is, that's where the push is at. It's for charter schools. Is there any conversation coming from the state that? Is it more revolving around a cyber school? Is that the, the future that we're, we're looking at? I mean, I, I don't, we don't see those, we don't see those assumptions.
I, I think the most discussion around the state is, do we continue to allow charters in any fashion? Has it been good? And you, and you get people on both sides of the spectrum. Do I see our state going backwards and offering, backwards in the sense of offering local parents less choices? I don't. I, I really don't. Even, even if in my heart of hearts, I said, "Man, I'm a person who does not believe in charters, I do not want the state doing this, blah, blah, blah." Do I think the state is gonna move in that direction? No, I don't. If you're asking me, "What direction do I think the state's gonna move in?", I think walls will continue to come down. I think local district boundaries will continue to come down. The latest thing with MHSAA and the Clarkson basketball player. While that's sports and while the, the initial ruling that came back said, "Yep, no, can't do all that", those questions are gonna be asked and they're gonna come up again and again and again. Because what did we hear from Lansing and all of us? Well, if a student and a parent can go schools of choice for academic reasons, why can't they athletics? Now, I can sit here and argue all day long my own personal beliefs. That's not what you're asking. You're asking, "What do I think the state's gonna do?" And I think it'll continue to expand.
Yes, a couple, a couple things. One, with as many colleges going online, we need to prepare these kids for that, and that's where OVA works well. But OVA was limited to so many counties, and I think this gives us that flexibility of going statewide. The other topic, are we open to the idea of us getting even more educated? And entertain the idea of a town hall type thing to get the feedback from the community to say, you know, "Hey, we wanna voice an opinion, good or bad, just to get those opinions." Is that?
I'll, I'll do anything that the board wishes that I do.
I mean, I, I, you gotta know about that.
Dan?
Good.
One, I just wanna share some thoughts as I'm listening to you, fellow board members. The thing that I'm seeing is, to me, it seems like a, like diversification. That if you're looking at, looking at the wholeness of a school district, or wholeness of a business, or a wholeness of anything, and a trend, a trend is moving away from what you got. Trends are moving away from the mall, they're going to Amazon. Trends are moving away from the strip mall, they're going to Amazon. That one of the things that a strip mall store does is diversify, or out-of-the-box create something new to capture some of the, some of the market share. I think that's what we're talking about. I, I feel, I feel that people are saying, "Well, wait a minute, it's not Oxford." Nope. If Sam said, "We wanna move a bunch of our money to this account because it's got 4% more interest," we would say, "Okay." Because it's a diversification of our resources in order to get the biggest gain for us. I think what, what, and I'm not, I'm not trying to sell it, I'm just trying to say, understand, I think, what they're trying to say. We're not trying to add to Oxford. We're trying to diversify something that we do gain in financially. It's the number one gain that we have in that for very little management, we get a chunk of resources that comes right back to our district. Now then, build all your other questions and comments. But I think that's what they're, that's what I hear is, is being said. See it as not Oxford adding a building, adding a bunch of staff, adding a this or adding a that. It is a diversification investment. Because trends are telling us, everything's going that direction. You can stay a mall if you want, you can stay in the strip mall if you want, or you can diversify a section. So then what you do is ask for, "What's my risk?" And someone asks that, "What's the cost? How can this come back and whiplash me?" If there isn't a whole lot of whiplash effect, then you say cautiously, "Take a step." Because if it's gonna benefit us, okay, can we get out of this if we don't like it? Those, these are the kinds of things you ask if he wants to move money. Can we get out of it or be locked in for eight months at a variable rate? Right? Or eight years or whatever it might be. So, I don't know if I'm stating that correctly, but that's what I think I'm hearing. Any other comments? Yes?
I'd just like to request that that question, what is the risk, be incorporated in any, any dialogue with future potential applicants to partner with the law? It's the what's the risk question, because we hear a lot about the benefit and, and I feel like some of it is assumed, some of it is very real. But I don't know that side, I don't care what we know about that side very well. Thank you.
Good for now. We understand we have another presentation early February, and not the one towards the end of February.
Correct. So our, our plan going forward is we've got two or three weeks before our next meeting. We'll collect information, if we wanna have some type of town hall, we can certainly have some type of town hall. But our goal is to come back with a much more specific direction, motion, objective at our next meeting. And then you wouldn't have to hold on to anything until the end of February. So, a month and some hours, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, John.
Board members, thank you, have a good discussion.
What would the motion be voted on? What, cyber's partnership we're gonna create or are we gonna pursue a cyber partnership?
Ultimately, you would be voting on whether we want to authorize our charter just yet. That's, that's the next decision. And then by your policies, the board already allows me to sign on your behalf for contracts. And so, then I would be in that negotiation phase and all. And so, then I would be in that negotiation phase and ultimately agreeing on that, that contract and that application that we would send to the state. So, the, the biggest thing is just you guys voting on, yep, we're gonna authorize a charter, or?
And the state has to approve our, our application to be an author?
Correct, yeah. So we'll have to put everything together, and then after you guys vote and authorize that, we send it to the state.
Like the state board, or what?
To MDE, and then they have so many days that they have to respond and all that good stuff.
Can I just ask a little quick question? What does OVA, so OVA is Oakland County and the surrounding six counties?
Uh huh.
That's all we, we can only help students?
If the county touches our borders.
Touches our borders, yeah.
Well, it's not district, it's counties?
County. And that's traditional schools of choice. So since Macomb County touches Oakland County, any student in Macomb County could physically come here, sit in seated as a school of choice, or they can attend OVA as a school of choice student. That's, that's how that works.
Board members still under five, there's a, a motion there underneath five minutes of our superintendent evaluation for 2018 calendar year. Is there a second? Support, Dr. Brasington? Any discussion? All of the figures say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Six, curriculum instruction, Mr. Weaver.
Just a quick update, the schools in the second semester, both middle school and high school, will be giving the I-FI survey. It is a survey of risky behaviors in kids with quite a bit of the emphasis being likely on sexting and other issues. We felt it was important to survey the kids and see, kinda get a better picture as to what all of the behaviors we're dealing with. It goes into tobacco use, alcohol. There is on the high school survey, which they'll be doing the full, some questions regarding sexual activity, but parents have the option of opting out of the survey, and there will be an notification going home prior to the survey. The middle school will be doing the basic, which does not have that in its survey. So, just kinda wanna make you, give you an FYI on that. FYI, that will be through the seventh and ninth grade health classes. So that will give us that. It's all anonymous, it's not, we don't know any names, who built it out or anything like that. We just know what groups took it basically, fully all, basically half of the seventh grade and half of the ninth grade, basically to give us an idea of some of the things where challenges were up against.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Number seven, Mr. Barnes, Finance and Operations.
Good evening. I have a motion to approve the ordering as well as the purchase eventually of 12 new buses under our bond campaign.
Someone like Dan.
Move to approve the ordering of four new 71-passenger, six new 65-passenger, and two new 53-passenger buses from the Michigan Bus Purchasing Program, Capital City Bus Sales, in the amount of $973,392.00, as previously discussed at the January 9th, 2018 board meeting.
Do we have support? Heather? Discussion. Dan?
I just wanna thank the team for providing Sam with the information, that $973,000 and some changes, we all under what we anticipated for that new buses, so.
Great job. Great job. Any other discussion? All of the speakers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We already did Human Resources, number eight. Student Services, this week.
On February 13th, you will see the official board memo, and there'll be a motion to vote out of schools of choice for the 2018-19 school year, and our recommendation, the cabinet recommendation will be to be open, developmental kindergarten through ninth grade unlimited, 10th and 11th grades unlimited to ID, Health Services, Engineering Academy, the Biarts Conservatory, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th unlimited to the Oxford International Program, 9th, 10th, and 11th unlimited to Early College, and kindergarten through 12th unlimited to the Oxford Virtual Academy, and that is the exact same recommendation that we approved last year, there's no changes to that. That will come up as a motion, absolutely, heard and uncut.
Very good. Number 10, unscheduled audience participation. Skill activities, take a look at that, and keep this one in your folder. Is there anything particular that jumps out? I guess they all do them. Next board meeting of 13th is here? Is that the next one? No. Yes, yes, very good. Any clarification? None. Final board comments. Trustees, Yosander.
Well, I wanna thank, I'll go first. I wanna thank Jill for the presentation. I also wanna thank staff that joined us today for the board appreciation there, thank you for your time. I know it's, it's something that, this time of year is cold, it's, you kinda wanna be home, but I appreciate you spending your time with us. It's always good to see you here, always gonna have an opportunity to sit with Asia and let her make fun of me for a while, that's all that. But the, the discussion that we had is a very good discussion, and it's an indication of a good, strong board. You don't have to, although most of the results, they went 7-0, these are the kind of conversations that you have that lead to good, strong boards, and I'm glad that we're in that place, regardless of how this turns out, we're doing things the right way, so.
Thanks to Karen, and I'll echo Dan, and thanks to all those who joined us tonight for dinner, that was very nice to be celebrated, and a nice coming together and relaxed feeling that was, just to get some socialized a little bit, so I wanna thank you for that. And thanks to Jill and Tim for a really informative second presentation. That's, I think it takes a lot of courage to come before a board in our constituency and talk about things that are brand new, and leaps almost of faith in some ways, and I really look forward to the follow-up presentations, but I feel like you guys are doing a great job giving us what you can, and letting us discuss. Thank you for that opportunity, it's really helpful. And finally, I wanna thank Mr. Wolf and Mrs. Beasley, and any of those who have been involved in really taking on the education of our students and collaborating with our parents to, to offer some solutions for managing a little bit of tough subject matter in the crimes and the dangers, assemblies and productions that are ongoing. Unfortunately, I had it on my calendar, but I did not get to attend the board plot session for parents here, and I'm a parent of a high school student, and I really am sorry that I missed it, but I really do appreciate, that's another courageous move, I think, to take that subject matter on, and it is something that makes Oxford pretty special to me, and that's another source of differentiation. We, we open up and we offer to collaborate, and I feel like our constituency needs to know how much we do want to collaborate, and that's so appreciated in your note, Tim, and in this initiative, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Dr. Brasington?
Sure, I echo what Dan and Jenny said. Also just thanks to Karen visiting her department as well for our dinner. We get a chance to experience what a high school kid could experience through their lunch program, and just incredible choices at, at really reasonable prices, so just thanks to the graciousness of that whole department. And I'm gonna do a lot of homework, you know, about charter schools, I really wanna be able to speak more intelligently about charter schools, because right now, all I think of is Betsy DeVos and the billions of dollars that Michigan taxpayers are paying on charter schools, and I didn't want any part of that taxpayer money just going for something that I can't support. So, I'm gonna definitely do some homework on charter schools, and specifically cyber charter schools, but I wanna definitely have an open mind to all the different options that are available out there. And just because we agree to disagree, that's okay, like Dan said, it's okay to agree to disagree.
Very good. Heather?
I, I feel the same way as Joyce and Dan said, too, I think it's, you know, we're not supposed to be battleheads, like, we're not supposed to be up here and just agreeing on everything, and it's very good, and I think we're a representation of the people that voted us into these positions when we have these types of discussions, when we ask these types of questions, because those are the questions that they're gonna ask when we're in a parking lot at a soccer game, or, you know, that, that's exactly how that will go down, so I think it's really important that we're having these discussions, I know it took a lot of time, but that's what our job is here as board members, so. I thought the dinner was fantastic. I love to cook, but I love somebody else cooking before I do. I thought it was great. I've never even been here for the whole big kid, you know, my kids are little, so I thought it was super fantastic. So thank you for that, and I'm pumped about the buses, that'll be great, so, yeah, that'll do it. And congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
This is your first seated meeting as president, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. Corey?
Like everybody else said, thank you very much for the dinner, it is very appreciative. Wanna echo what Dan said, it was very nice to sit and listen to Asia make fun of him.
I wanna be at that table next time. Easy target.
I did, I did make it to the Friday presentation, and I, I wanna thank you guys for putting that on. It's a little scary as a parent with a teenager with some of those devices, but I'm glad that you guys took the initiative and made a, a parent aware of the dangers, what potentially is going on, and it was a little scary. I wanna thank Tim and Jill again for the presentation. Whether or not this goes anywhere, I appreciate you guys putting the effort into keeping us looking at the future. I mean, if you're sitting sagging that you're dying, and we're not, and I appreciate you guys doing that, and I'm looking forward to pursuing this. And congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Steff.
You laughed, everybody else, they got to say all the good stuff.
One of us is laughing, I'm not even sure who that's supposed to be.
I want some of the good stuff. Let me try. First of all, thanks to Karen, and I don't even see her, did she leave?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That was awesome, it was even more awesome to know that that's available to our kids, I didn't know that. That's, that's great, and it was a wonderful dinner, and the dessert that I finished up sitting here. And thanks to Jill and, and to Tim, and I just can't emphasize this enough, some of the, some of the terminology that I heard when I was out at, when I go to the school board meetings and seminars and things, is that Oxford's a pioneer. We've been called that by many people, and when you're a pioneer, if you think back to our, you know, our heritage, it was a rough road, and you made mistakes, but what do you do? You get back up, and you keep on kicking, and you keep on pushing, and you keep on coming with new out-of-the-box ideas. And the discussion that we had here tonight was absolutely awesome, I agree with everybody about that. There's positives, there's negatives, there's unknowns, and we need to get to that point where it can benefit us, and we can be a part of whatever the future is gonna be, and we really don't know that at this point. So, I wanna thank a good, good friend, Thomas here, as being our new president, that's awesome, and I love 12 new buses, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. That's, no kidding.
Are you next, sir?
Or am I next?
I'm next.
All right, very good. First of all, to you, to you as a board, thank you, with a lot of humility. I, I take on this position, and just be patient with me as we work it out. I love this board, I, I love the communication we have, and it's awesome. Buses, it doesn't get better than that, right? And then for deals, nice job. I think we should do more stuff where we're hanging out with the staff, I enjoyed sitting at a table, and even though I didn't know exactly what everyone was talking about, it was fun listening, and, but I'd just like to eat the novelty, and I, I think that's cool. Tim, probably about three months ago, I, I made the statement that you get into stuff that you don't have to get into. You can just keep this well-oiled machine running and leave, and the next step deals with what happens in the future. Only a nut like you would take on what we got greasing the wheels, and the edge, the nice edge of what might be in the future and where things are going, and so, I'm enjoying this, this is gonna be a, a great month of studying, as Joyce said, I agree, I wanna dig in and learn more about the trends of where this is going, but I just appreciate you as a leader, because you don't, don't have to go there in your honor, so thank you, and thank you, Jill. I think that's it. I think that's it.
All right. Well, I think I'll just maybe end with this, and that in addition to the dinner, you all have been given a little token of our appreciation for, for appreciation month, and thank you, Pat, for arranging and ordering all of that. And so, I know that your job isn't always the fun stuff, and it's been a long time in between since.
You should.
Milk's right for you.
Not, I thought it was gonna open up. But we're appreciating that one. It's an action.
It's a very nice container. And it's reusable.
In every meeting, you guys don't get to order new buses. In fact, you know what, it's been years.
A long time.
Since we've ordered new buses, and so, just as your superintendent from your district staff, we really do appreciate the time and effort and the hours that you put in. We, we know you don't do it for the money, and, and our community thanks you for that, so I'll weigh that.
Very good, very good. 14 is other? None. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion?
I just had to grab, back the table.
We are adjourned.